Remember you asked a couple of questions at the council table one time to get the feedback? Remember you and, remember that? Oh, you did it just to get feedback?
Picking out, man.
Ready down there?
Yeah.
Call to order the regular common council meeting, Monday, September 18th, 7:00 PM. Rule call.
Ryan. Anderson.
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson. Sheldon.
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes. Do we know if Debbie was supposed to be here?
I, she said she's coming.
Okay. We know Jonathan's excused, so we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Confirmation of appropriate meeting orders. Next item is council acceptance of the agenda, but on number 10, can we move that up between eight and nine so we can have the mayor, all the persons, the staff reports prior to the closed session?
Would that change? I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Personal appearances for non-agenda items? Anybody out in the audience who wishes to begin? It's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from September 5th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then the minutes from September 6th, special council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions on that one? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Committee reports, finance and Mark.
Make a motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $156,944.41.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none. Rule call.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Second Mayor?
Yes. Olson passes.
I will make a motion to approve a new cigarette and tobacco license for Family Dollar Stores of Wisconsin LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes. Motion passes.
Number three, we made a motion to move it on to council for discussion with no recommendation.
After the last meeting, I personally would like to see it either used just specifically as informational tool. I would not like to see it used in SIU. Had the vehicle description not been given during that meeting and closed session or not, crap gets out. I don't want to see it used for a special investigation that someone could get hurt on and we'd be responsible for. So, the other two options are open, as far as I'm concerned. Sell it or use it for whatever the chief deems appropriate.
I'm also against using it for the special investigations. You know, so I guess my question now to Tom is if we were to not use it in that manner, do you have a preference regarding the other two uses?
Like I said before, we have uses for it. Promotional uses would be appropriate, but the option selling, we're not going to get anything that's not worth it. All of it would go to the school.
So, how much, Tom, do you think that you'll get out of it for promotional?
Any chance we can?
But I mean, like what? I mean, I'm trying to decide whether it would be worth, because we're talking a couple thousand dollars, right? The first year to put into it, between getting it fixed and licensing and insurance. Would that couple thousand dollars be better used for something else? I mean, I don't know. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I don't know whether a couple thousand dollars is going to be estimated, about $500.
$500 work to get it going, right? Mechanical?
If it needs to be cleaned out, it needs to be cleaned.
Okay.
Cleaned, licensed, entitled and braked. That's where we're at right now.
But then it costs us to license it, entitle it, and also put insurance on it.
I don't know what the insurance would be, but title and registration, the brakes and the interior thing, we're about $500.
Oh, that includes a title and license and?
Debbie know about this at all? Oh, do you? Okay. It was a vehicle seized through a road most.
Candy, I can't answer how many times we'll use it.
Yeah.
Because it's multiple and it can increase and we utilize it also for the department for all the things to, I mean, it would be used.
It would be used. It would be, it would be, it would be worth the money we'd put into it, you think?
We definitely utilize it in any way possible. But make yourself, it'd make it worthwhile. It'll last a year, maybe, maybe more than a year, we don't know. But it would definitely be used any opportunity we had for promotional type thing or partnering with, it would be used.
And the promotional stuff, how would that go about? Like, do we got this view because of X, Y and Z, Tom? Is that what you mean, or?
It would, it would be more, just to, how we got it.
If we were to keep it to be used in that manner, who would be driving it? Who would be allowed to drive it? Basically, your officers? Strictly your officers, or?
Yeah. That's what I see. How it is. No, either the department or maybe on staff, maybe or something.
I'm just speaking out loud. If, if we did use it for multiple uses, for staff or getting out to community, we got this view because of, you know, illegal activity, and this is what happens to people. You know, that can be a positive thing. I'm just mentioning it that way. I don't think, if that's a big thing or not, but.
That's promotional thinking itself.
You know, you say, hey, this can happen to you, people out there doing these types of legal activities in this country or the city, you know, and so that could be a positive thing, I'm just saying.
Yeah. I don't recall, what was the value of it if you were to sell it? Do you estimate?
Thirty-four hundred, but very little to the city because it goes to the state school fund.
Oh.
Our cost would be covered, would go, about it, wasn't it? Our cost covered on it?
Yeah. So, it's not, not really worth pursuing, recovering our costs, it's just not good enough.
It seems to me that as an educational tool and a promotional type thing, I think that sounds like a good idea.
If, here's a question to go on that. If, if we did decide hypothetically, use it for that promotional things, whatever they are, and if we decide not to do that anymore, we can still sell it then? Get rid of it? I mean, okay.
Yeah.
Just curious on that.
So, that's a good question. And if we did that, are the funds still, would the funds still go back to the school? Okay.
It goes, it goes to the school fund, it doesn't go to Edgerton.
Right.
The state school fund, so.
So, like Tom mentioned, like that $500, save it, use it for a year, and, and it's like, ah, they ain't worth it, then you can sell it. Just an idea, if we decided to go that route. Do other communities use it for the purpose, like stated that we might use it for, for, you know, to show the public what happens, or do other communities do this, Tom? That you know?
Across the country.
Okay.
I've seen a couple of them up at the Packer games. They're all painted up.
Oh, yeah.
Their, their driver program, where they've seized them. Corvette and an Escalade, so it's.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Oops, oh, sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, a lot of faith in you, Candy.
He does.
Wait a second.
I don't care what she says.
Okay.
No, I just trust her, that's why. I totally trust her. I apologize, I always send that.
This could be good.
Boy.
I'll make a motion to utilize the vehicle as a promotional activity, but I would like to relook at this in a year to see how it was used, just out of curiosity.
I'll second that.
No, did that get seconded?
Okay, I thought maybe Matt did again.
No, no. Head to that motion, Matt pays for the cost to get it ready. Since he was right in there wants to get, get this done.
I just hope it does, I think, Candy, you brought some good questions, you did, and, you know, kind of, so I like that, you know, and like I said, try it out for a year, doesn't work, you know, sell it, get, put money back to school, and hopefully, through the first year, it'll be a positive effect.
Okay, so everybody's clear what the use of the vehicle will be? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Rule call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. And passes.
Going to make a motion to allow Edgerton Electric to do work at Central Park, installing electrical outlets to be done at a DPW director's and Edgerton Electric's discretion, and not to exceed an amount of $5,000.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve a purchase agreement for 322 Spencer Street between Rock County and the city of Edgerton for $3,719.69.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes. Motion passes.
Make a motion to adopt City of Edgerton Resolution 2017, approving the purchase agreement for the property located at 322 Spencer Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the purchase agreement for 322 Spencer Street between the city of Edgerton and Matthew and Darcy DeBries in the amount of $3,719.69, plus any expenses and fees from Rock County, not to exceed $1,000.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just have to comment in general, and that this is, this is a good thing for the city, it seems like it, you know, you know, hopefully do something good with the property.
Anyone else? Rule call.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. Motion passes.
All I have for finance.
Thank you. Utility?
Utilities met on Monday, September 11th. Couple things to report on. The Utility Commission Committee decided there would be no water and no sewer increase for 2018. The other thing to report on is we did get the grant for $219,000 for South Main Street for the work on that, in addition to a low interest rate loan for the remainder work. So, nice job, Ramona, for that whole grant work.
Lot of people involved.
And then I understand we've got Jim Capellin here that would like to say a few things.
Thank you, Candy. I asked the mayor if I could be able to address the city council tonight, because I want to share a great story. I think I've shown a lot of players in that story. I also want to thank a lot of the people for their support. I've been the chairperson of the Edgerton Utility Commission for over 30, 20 years. Being on the Edgerton Utility Commission is a little different than on any, any of the other committees in the city. Edgerton Utility is actually a business. It doesn't rely on taxpayers' money or anything else like that. It relies on people, our customers, paying their water bills. And in fact, the utility last year paid approximately $190,000 in taxes. So, it's a little different type of deal. You can't just, well, rates go up and down. So, budgeting is always difficult, as anybody that sits on the council knows of that. And if the utility spends more than it earns, rates have to go up. And the water utility is governed by the PSC, and they set the rate of return for the utility. And if we don't make that return, rate of return, they'll force a rate study, and then you have to accept those increases and, to bring that rate of investment back into their goal. And that's what happened in 1996, and I was, I believe my first second year as chair. After the rate study, water and sewer rates went up, and anybody that was on the commission or on the council heard the complaints. During the rate study, the auditing firm used an Excel spreadsheet, which they call the forecasting tool. And toxic city staff, we determined the utility should have a copy of that, helping their budget. The utility purchased a copy of the forecasting tool and has been using it ever since. It shows how projects, how increases in prices of operating material, how borrowing affects the bottom line, and extends those costs over five years, so you can see down the line. But you only have to make a decision for that year. I think it has been a success. Utility has instituted 3% rate increases at times to keep up the faucet from inflation. The utility has scheduled projects to decrease our borrowing when possible, and paying cash when impossible. Having built just a new waste, having just built a brand wastewater treatment plant, the sewer utility does not need the rate increase to pay for it. Do a brand plus a good hole. A little shantel. I love this stuff. A bottle of water at a wholesale pump, buying a 24-pack, this costs 20 cents. Edgerton Utility delivers a gallon of water to anybody at home that's a customer. It's safe, it's fresh, and it's delivered to their house or their apartment. They can use it any way they want. When they're done with it, it can go down the drain and gets treated, goes back into the Rock River, just as clean as when it was pumped. We do it, and the utility does it, for busting 2 cents on a gallon. This, make a gallon, it would equal a dollar and 40 cents. Then you've got seven bottles to recycle. So, it's a pretty good deal. And if you're quicker, you're not going to get that for 20 cents. So, so I think we've had a very good success, and I would like to thank all the members of the utility commissions over the last 21 years that I've been honored to work with, the staff at City Hall, including Cindy, Wendy, Jenny and Lacy, our utility director, Randy, our administrator, Ramona, Department Public Works Director, Tom, for coordinating with street construction, our seater engineers, and lastly, the guys in the pits for, for water, that's Tom Benneken and Jeff Mill, for sewer, that's Jim Radley and Zach Nelson. And I'd also like to thank all the city councils in those 21 years for their support. Thank you for all being on the utility team, and I'm working with them, and I look forward through the years to come.
That's what I was afraid of, you were going to say something.
I thought this is a resignation, or I've had enough type thing, you know?
No, you can't do it, we're not letting them.
Chris, I can remember Randy in 96 there, when we just, we tweaked the whole thing around. Remember that, Jim? You mentioned that year? And we had a full council meeting at the old, our chambers, Airball, the people out there going, we switched it, we were not, in the past, we're using the taxes to supplement part of either the water or the sewer, remember Randy? And that's when we got Randy on board then. There was a change, a fundamental philosophical change, and you were right in the mix, mixed of it too, Jim. And, and there was a lot of ups and downs through the mid to late 90s, and then you hear it all around the streets. And I, you and I at the racetrack one time, and a couple council members that were against the rate increases, I remember you did that bottle of water. You know, look at this, what are you, what are you drinking? This bottle of water, you can get even cleaner, probably. That's probably not even regulated, like the utilities are in Edgerton. So, you hit the, right on the button there, Jim. And you've did a lot of work for a lot of people over the years. And, and you still got your full head of hair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, for sitting on the utility committee, I'd like to thank you, Jim Capellin, for chairing it. You do an awesome job. Counsel.
I want a seat, aren't I?
Keep going.
Counsel, counsel comes and goes, but you have, sounds like for 11 years, you've been on the?
20.
20.
21, or excuse me, 21 years you've been as chair, and I have learned a lot from you sitting on the, on the council, or on the committee. And many, many times, we have citizens come to the utility committee meeting, asking for a reduction in their bill because they had a leak, a leak credit. So, they didn't know that they had a faucet leaking, or they didn't know something was leaking. And while we have limitations that we can offer them a leak credit, Jim has been really, really diligent on trying to find that happy medium between helping the customer, but also not letting it get out of control with us over refunding because somebody has to pay for it, right? So, if we can constantly gave them too much of a credit, you know, that's where some of those rates would be, we would have to be increasing these rates. So, thank you for all of your hard work, and also educating all of the members on the committee. So, thank you, Jim.
Say, Chris, I just want more. One of the key points, there's a lot of key points to that thing, but now the places that were, now like, everyone's paying water, sort of like the churches that were, didn't have to pay as much on the tax part, was it? Did they?
Well, not one of the sewer, sewer used to be part of the work.
That's I mentioned, right there, exactly.
That was different, but that was, once it became one of the utility commission, then everybody, it's on you.
Yep.
I also served on utility commission for a few years, and I would like to thank you for, just like Candy said, that's where I learned everything about utility, how that works, and, and that was possible because of you, so I really appreciate that.
I try to let people know, and try to help everybody. It's never a dumb question, because it's a complicated deal. We are going to, Randy, are we still having a tour at the wastewater treatment plant? Yeah, so.
Yes, that's right. I forgot to say that. We will be having a tour of the new wastewater treatment plant next Monday at 5:30. Meet out at there if any of the council members are interested in going on the tour.
Is this open to the public, or just the council?
No, just council and committee and utility. Yep.
And most of you know Jim's on a lot more other committees besides utilities, so we appreciate it.
Monday at 5:30.
So, that sure sounded like a resignation. I was getting really nervous in here.
I just felt, I just felt that everybody needed to stay, why actually, what a great dimension this city has blessed us with, what a great utility this city has blessed us with.
Yep. Do we meet on site down, or meet here first?
Down, on site.
Okay, thanks again, Jim, for, for that and everything else. Anything else from utilities?
No, that's it.
Let's move on to personnel, if there's anything.
Okay, that's me again. Personnel committee met also Monday, September 9, or 11th. Two things that we did approve was to increase 2018 wages for swim lesson instructors. We jumped it up $1 per hour, so that's a $5 salary for swim lessons, for the swim lesson instructor. We also did bump up the 2018 DPW part-time wage increased by $2 an hour, so we increased that to $9.25 per hour. The reason for that is Tom has had a very difficult time getting summer help, part-time help, at $7.25 an hour. So, by increasing it $2 an hour, we figure that he'll be able to get some help for the summer. That's it. We're going to have to hold another personnel meeting once the health insurance and dental insurance quotes are in. I think that's it. I don't think I missed anything else. Okay.
All right, thank you. Next item is discuss capital improvement plan and future, future borrowing.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Starting on page 7 of your packet, there are several pages that follow that talk about the next borrowing, really. This is, we're not making decisions about projects officially for the next borrowing. Every time we get into a new budget year, you'll be budgeting for which project you're going to do in the next year. But this is that 10-year plan that we have, and it's a look ahead. And since we are in a year where we have completed the, used all the resources from the last borrowing, we'll now be talking about the next group of projects that we're thinking are priorities. So, we would, of course, like your input into those items that we think are priorities for that next borrowing. I have to say that all of this is very, very rough estimating. We don't know what rates are going to be when we borrow, so the amount of resources we'll have at the borrowing will, of course, obviously be dependent upon that. But what this borrowing plan does do is it sticks with your motion made a few years ago in which you wanted to have a, a stable and level debt service payment. So, this continues to carry that objective forward. It does not have an increasing debt service, it's a flat level, or close to it, as you can get. So, that is following the council's decision a few years ago to do that. So, I'll just kind of go through the projects that are listed here. You can comment, ask questions. At the next council meeting, we will start talking about the 2018 budget, and then you will have the specifics about all the items that are on the capital list for 2018. But some of those projects will fit into this borrowing we'll do in 2019, and we borrow, for those of you who haven't been on the council, most recently, we borrow every four years. So, this is why, one borrowing to cover all of the projects. So, these projects may change as priorities change, but we've done a lot of talking with all the department heads with what's under the streets and what's the street itself looks like, and have come up with these projects. So, our estimate of what will fit into the borrowing are the projects, the pool painting, that's something that is done about every eight years' time? Something like that?
Probably, probably.
It's due again. Chaucer Street has been a project that we've certainly had some residents express concern over its condition. It is a water sewer curb, it's a total reconstruct, including the sewer and water that's underneath the street. It will involve some special assessments for pieces of sidewalk and curb that are missing. Sweetie Street is also a street entire reconstruct. It will include sewer water, storm sewer, curb gutter, street, and there are some special assessments for missing sidewalk in that project also. South Main Street is a huge project, for those of you who follow it from the utility side, the 400 and, almost eight, almost $500,000. The 400 and almost eight, almost $500,000, that's just the street. The stormwater utility has a large share of that also. We'll see in their five-year capital plan, sewer and water has two huge projects that will be, or a huge project for those for sewer and water. So, we are seeking grants for that project. We will know this fall, the big grant is the DOT grant, which would cover 80% of the street costs. So, this is the assumption in this spreadsheet is that this is our 20% of the whole, whole street project. So, if we're at 500,000, you know, the numbers are over 2 million for this project. So, it is, it is a huge project. And so, we're going to of course anticipate it happening in this next borrowing, but it will, I think entirely depend upon whether or not we get the grant. Quigley Street is a street reconstruction, so not an entire reconstruction, it's a resurfacing, so it's curb and gutter repair. It's a water sewer replacement and the street, entire street surface gets replaced, but it isn't a street reconstruct in which all the curb and neighbor and everything goes. Broadway Street resurfacing, we've just looked at this, started in the last week, so we're, we're kind of still trying to get our head around it. But we think that the portion of Broadway Street from East Fulton to East Rollin connected to the Chaucer Street project, that street is in a really tough shape. We would like to try to resurface it basically, the portion of the street that is, hasn't, wasn't resurfaced with the sewer project. Correct me if I'm wrong gentlemen over there. So, we're thinking that as long as we're doing Chaucer, it probably would be the time to improve the street surface on Broadway. So, those are the projects that are large enough probably that you, the only way to fund those is through a borrowing. And then listed also here below that are some projects that will be appearing in your 2018 budget. Certainly not all of them are going to fit in the budget, but they probably won't fit in this borrowing, but we'll have to start prioritizing just so you know kind of what you're looking at when I wanted you to see a little, a few of these items that are, you'll be seeing on October 2nd. So, city garage roof, Tom's doing a lot of investigation to see if that $30,000 is a real number. So, we don't, that's very squishy at this point, I would say. And there's a whole bunch of work at the Vets Building. Some of it is pretty imperative, some of it can wait probably. It's the parking lot surfacing, some of the, there are awnings on the building and they're not like clock awnings, they're structural awnings and they are falling down, so they're, they really are in very bad shape. Windows and doors, we have some doors that are in pretty rough shape. So, there's a list of various things here that we have had the architect from seater come out and take a look at, things that ought to be on probably a 10-year list if they don't make it through next year's budget, they ought to be probably on a list sometime into the, in the future, not too far out into the future. So, I guess I'll stop there and then there, I'll just, I guess like, there's one other item listed in your staff report and that's the stormwater utility five-year plan. I can try to answer any questions about that. That's the same kind of project scheduling for those of you who've been on the Utility Commission that we use for the sewer and water utilities, laying out the projects and their estimated costs. So, again, you're not, you won't decide about what projects to include in that borrowing until each budget year. But we, you know, again, working with the department heads who know what's out in this, in the real world out there, these are the projects that we think are the priority.
No, I have a question. In 2027, for instance, like West Rollin Street from Third Street to Albin, Randy or Tom, would we do in water and sewer if we redid that street?
I'd probably.
Okay, yeah, okay, gotcha.
I could do that. So, aside from, you know, like what I do here, I actually, you know, do a bunch of, you know, I guess like freelance, you know, I guess the grant writing. You know, and I'm just currently, you know, you know, trying to build, you know, what I've been doing. So, I'm, I'd be interested in helping, you know, from, you know, from, I guess like the, you know, I guess like fundraising, like grant side of this, you know? And I'm just curious about how to do that.
To assist us? Is that what you're asking to offer, to assist? I'd be happy to meet with you. If you have any knowledge that we, you could share with us, we are, we go after any grant we can, that makes sense.
Awesome, great.
Thank you. Don't need anything else out of council?
Any comments?
Push for anything or?
Right, that would be the time.
Don't need to do some of the projects? I don't think there's any of them on there.
I'm glad to see Chaucer Street on there at least.
I think you and I discussed one time, Chaucer Street, the bridge is going to be, that's probably going to be a pedestrian only thing if that, when it's done?
Correct. So, the cul-de-sac from, coming from the west headed to the east?
But there will be a bridge there or we would just abandon crossing it all?
It will be, it will be a bridge for pedestrians. So, it will not allow vehicles across, but it will allow pedestrians and bikes.
Okay.
What's the reason for just being a pedestrian bridge instead of returning it to a vehicular bridge?
Dollars. Hundreds of thousands of dollars for a bridge that we didn't think we needed.
Any funding available that we can get help with because it?
I'm not aware of any.
I used to use that bridge all the time. I drove over there daily.
So, it was a, it was a matter of balancing the cost and benefit and the decision makers at the time decided that it is when that was not worth the investment.
That's too bad.
What's that, I didn't hear that.
Making it a pedestrian, making it a, repairing it again so you could drive on it.
Oh, okay. Have you had feedback from those residents about what they?
It's been really quiet quite frankly since the bridge was closed. At least from, from my end, Tom's nodding in agreement.
I haven't heard anything, so.
Hoda Schultz passed away, he used to, he wanted it, but he's buried, so.
Yeah, of the, of the one I talked to down there, I think he's more than happy that it's closed off, but the only complaint I had was when it first happened, they didn't live in town. Thought it was a shortcut, but it wasn't.
Well, kind of.
Depending on the traffic.
Depending on the traffic, at the lights, at the light.
Yeah, or trying to get out and head on to Fulton Street heading east, which, looking up that hill there is dangerous enough, but. Okay, well, if there's nothing else on that, we'll move on to number 10. Mayor, all the person in the staff reports. Got a, got a letter here I'm going to read, if it's okay with one of the, one of the guys that wrote it.
Okay.
Okay.
I've seen it.
No, no, it's not. No, it's actually, it's a good, it's a good one. This is dated August 31st from the National Night Out 2017, Rock County Sheriff's Office and Edgerton Police Department to the City of Edgerton Public Works Department and Dear Director Tom Hartzell. The Rock County Sheriff's Office and the Edgerton Police Department truly appreciate your assistance with our National Night Out 2017 event held August 1st at Racetrack Park in Edgerton. National Night Out 2017 brought public safety personnel members to the public together, of the public together for a completely free, family-friendly, fun night. The connections created between law enforcement officers and citizens lead to safer, stronger communities. Over 3,000 people attended and enjoyed a community cookout, public safety demonstrations, informative vendor displays, kids activities and games, live music, and free raffles for adults and kids. We are very, we were very grateful to have the City of Edgerton Public Works Department as a sponsor of National Night Out 2017. As a free event, we rely on sponsors to provide the best national night out possible. Thanks, thank you for your generous donation of your staff's assistance with logistics for our event. We are thankful that your staff moved picnic tables, put up a snow fence barrier, and mowed racetrack park close to our event date. Your support directly contributed to the success of National Night Out 2017. Our agencies greatly value the opportunity to partner with the City of Edgerton Public Works Department. Thanks again. With gratitude, Sheriff Robert Spoden and Chief Tom Clubertans.
Nicely written.
Very nice.
I mean, I, I met the mayor out there and I saw Tom and I talked to the Rock County Sheriff and as many people as possible, it was just a tremendous event it was, it really was.
It was close to home too.
Yeah. I have one item.
Okay.
The, following the presentation we had for the agility program through our insurance, we have sent out requests for quotes for electrical contractors to size, evaluate things in size for contractors. So, just I wanted to let you know that we're following through on that to try to get that information in place and make sure that we have a plan ultimately.
Awesome.
And the insurance carrier again has now provided in writing that they will be covering the cost for the electrical evaluation.
Great. I just had one, Chris, is there any more update on the 12 and 5 o'clock whistle, Tom? Any movements still going?
Not on the agenda.
So, Jenny, we'll be working on that this week.
I heard it being tested one day. I was excited.
I would like to extend a thank you to Chief Clubertans and his staff. I was able to do a ride along with them the other night during the SIU and it was an awesome thing to do. I learned so much of the non-typical things that they go through and thank you to you and your staff for allowing me the privilege to ride along. It was a very, very worthwhile thing to do.
Taking the time to do it.
Yep.
Welcome to our life.
Yep, interesting.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, discuss and consider cornerstone negotiations.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Valdez?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.